Good evening. It is now 6:00 PM on June 3rd, 2025. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the planning board. The planning board is a seven-member board. Any special permit decision of this board requires a two-thirds vote. Two-thirds of a seven-member board is five. If only five members vote, the vote would have to be unanimous. Any decisions on preliminary and definitive plans, approval not required, and proposed zoning amendments require a majority vote of the full board. Any decision on scenic road permits require a majority of the quorum present. Any person giving testimony must state and spell their name and provide their street address for the record. All questions from the public should be directed through the chair. This meeting is live and streamed on Sandwich Community Television's website and on local Channel 9. This meeting is being recorded and will be available on SCTV website at www.sandwichtv.org tomorrow. According to town bylaws, meetings are audio recorded. If anyone intends to also record, kindly notify the chair. Thank you, Taylor. Okay, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please note that Jeff Picard is participating remotely via Zoom. All votes of the board are by roll-call vote today. Fourth, submission of new plans. Are there any submissions of new plans? No? Okay, then we will move into old business. 36 Asamiggs Road Cluster Special Permit with an Approval Not Required Land Division for the purpose of creating a three-block cluster subdivision. As a reminder, the public hearing for the Cluster Special Permit remains open. And we received from Sam Jensen some comments regarding the application for Cluster Development Special Permit and Approval Not Required Plan land off of Asamiggs Road Parcel 03-048. The first three items have been addressed, so I will just go to the third item that Sam brought up. It is noted that the plan submitted with the Form A Application for Endorsement of Plan Believe Not to Require Approval is titled as a definitive plan of land with a planning board signature block stating that approval under the subdivision control law is required. It is apparent that it is advised that this apparent conflict needs to be addressed. It hasn't been addressed, but I think we're going to address it now, right? Okay. Steve, do you want to give us an overview?
Sure, sure. So, as we discussed this matter last time, it remains open from the prior hearing. The subdivision of a parcel off Asamiggs Road #36 into three buildable lots with an open space parcel. What we have before us today is a new plan that was brought in to demonstrate that three lots could be formed under conventional zoning as a precursor to the rest of the decisions. So that's here with us today, and Mr. Fitch is here to speak to that.
Attorney Fitch, would you like to speak to that?
Good evening. Yes, please. Madam Chair, I'm John Fitch, representing the applicant.
Oh, excuse me. Yes, go ahead, Jeff.
Before the applicant's speech, can I ask a question?
Sure.
It's not on the applicant's. So, I'm trying to understand something. So, Sam sent us a new memo, and the new memo had two new comments in addition to comments in the old comments. And we didn't read the entire memo.
That's correct. Thank you for bringing that to my attention. So let me read those new comments before we go further.
They put everything before we move on.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
You just said to read everything before we move on.
Okay, yep. New comments. Fourth, the department recommends that shared driveway be utilized to consolidate new entrances onto Asamiggs Road. Closely spaced driveways can negatively impact traffic safety. And five, the CAD submitted does not appear to identify the reference coordinate system and units. It is recommended that this be clarified. Please contact the engineering department with any questions regarding this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The last time, if you recall, Sam pointed out that the demonstration plan, which was the very first statement, first effort, did not properly show the number of lots. And that kind of put a stop to everything right there to make sure that we really could get three lots. So, when we continued the meeting last time, I contacted the surveyor right away, and some changes were made. A new demonstration plan was submitted, and Sam has looked at that. We appreciate it, and has concluded that three lots can indeed be created on this six-acre site. We were pretty confident, but still. What I would like for tonight, because we had a discussion the last time about how we might do a better job with the final plan, the A and R, remember those strips between it? The first order of business would be to say, how many lots can we get? And if we could tonight simply vote that the demonstration plan does show three lots, and then continue the matter till the next time, all these little technical items that Sam mentioned will be addressed in the final plan. So that it would be next time that you would actually vote on a special permit and hopefully to endorse the Approval Not Required Plan. So that, it's a limited goal for tonight, but if I could just ask the board to vote that the demo plan, demo plan really does confirm that three lots are possible, then we will come back next time with the final package. We also have to, forgive me for adding this one more thing. There are covenants that are asked for in the bylaw to assure that this open space will remain open space, and that will be submitted this week as well. So I'm very confident we'll have a plan and a submission, a corrected plan, a submission of covenants, and then we'll be ready to wrap this up hopefully at the next meeting.
Jeff, you want to go ahead?
Sure, thank you. So, a comment with respect to the request. When I read Sam's memo, and I was hoping Sam would give you, because in memo, he used the word, he says, "The department recognizing that the revised demonstration plan appears to conform." He doesn't say "conform." He used the word "appears." So I wanted to ask Sam, because there's nothing in the memo as to what is concerning to engineering, that they use the word "appears" instead of simply stating it "conforms." So, engineering has not yet stated it conforms. What they stated was, "It appears to conform." And I need a discussion with Sam in this area to understand where their concerns are. So at this time, I would vote no against that request. And my recommendation is that, Attorney, you take the request for the next time we get together when Sam is here, and we can get answers directly from engineering. And once we have answers directly from engineering, I would be comfortable based on those answers to then vote on this request that we made. But if you ask for a vote tonight, which you have done, and we can vote, I just want to let you know, I would vote no. And the reason I'll vote no is because I need Sam here to answer some questions on the demonstration plan.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Yes, so just so I understand, just for some clarity. So you're looking to address the fact whether or not three lots can be, it can be subdivided through an A and R with three lots, but the goal is really to do the cluster with the open space. You're asking for the three-lot subdivision because, with the A and R, because there was the definitive that we received, the definitive plan included the cluster subdivision.
Yes.
And then the one, the revised conceptual three-lot layout, that does not look like a cluster, correct? Because it has the...
It's just a demonstration plan using the conventional subdivision rules. The challenge with this process is, how many lots can you get using 200 feet of frontage, using 60,000 square feet of area? That demonstration plan determines how many lots you can then submit later with the cluster, using the cluster rules.
That's what I was, I was going to add to you, just for some clarity on that.
And respectfully, it's, when you get into, this is about process, and it's hard for an applicant to hire an engineer to do a definitive plan for three lots if maybe you can't get three lots. It's like doing it all at once is risky for the applicant. Now, this is only three lots. A clustered subdivision could be 50 or 100 lots as well, but I see it as a sequential thing. And the first order of business is to say, well, how many lots can you get? Then come back with the plan that shows the cluster, because the frontage is less, and the area is less, and it's reorganized so that there is open space.
Yeah, and I mean, and to Jeff's point, you know, it is not very clear in the memorandum that engineering, you know, supports it, you know, hard stop without, because the word "appears," you know. So it would appear that, yes, it does comply. So as long as engineering is fine with it, I'm fine with it as well.
That's my understanding, is that engineering has said, yeah, just like last time, they said it didn't.
Yeah.
Whether the word "appears" is in that language, I don't know.
Right, so as long as engineering supports it and finds that it's acceptable for A and R purposes, then I would be in support of that as well.
Thank you. It's important to us to be able to come back with the best plan possible to know that we can do three lots.
Other board members have comments or questions?
I have a question.
Jeff?
And I'm not sure if I should be directing it to Attorney Fitch or to our staff, but I was curious about shape factor. And does the conceptual plan before us tonight need to satisfy shape factor?
It does. It is required to satisfy shape factor, which was one of the reasons why the original conceptual plan had to be revised. The original plan did not meet shape factor. This one complies with shape factor requirements.
And can you clarify for me how shape factor is calculated?
So shape factor is calculated by taking the amount of square footage that is required for the district, plotting it on the conceptual plan. You then get the perimeter of that lot, square it, and divide it by the 60,000 square feet that is necessary for this district. And then that number has to be less than 22.
So it would be a matter of adding up all of the segments that make up each one of these lots, dividing by 60,000?
If you see here, it's the interior segments, because these first two lots, Lot 1 and Lot 2, are larger than 60,000 square feet. So you can see the engineer drew a dotted line in the middle of the lots to delineate 60,000 square feet. So it's the perimeter of the dotted line that's added up squared, divided by the lot area required for the district, and that provides your shape factor. So that's, you know, to make sure that you don't get panhandled lots or you get oblong shaped lots, basically.
I see.
And then that delineates, you know, so all of three of these lots. The Lot 3 is the easiest one, because it's an easier shape to do, and it is 60,000 square feet. You'd go on the perimeter of that, but the other two are larger than 60,000 square feet. Anyone else?
One other.
Go ahead.
Excuse me. Madam Chair, through you. Jack, each, the shape factor is actually listed on the plan for each lot?
My confusion came from, I actually went through the exercise for Lot 3, and using incorrectly, as it turns out, using the outside dimensions, the solid line, and that hit the shape factor that's on the plan bullseye.
I hope so.
Well, I don't know. I mean, mathematics is a little bit fuzzy to me, but I would assume that the same, you'd get to that same number by calculating out the segments for the dash line within the interior that represents the 60,000 square feet.
I don't understand it myself. I do believe, isn't it, it's designed, the shape factor is designed to avoid odd-shaped lots. I've often wondered, why do we want to avoid that? Why is that important? I don't know. But we meet it. It's a rule, and we meet it.
Jeff, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question. I apologize, but I cannot see what's on the board. I cannot see what you're pointing to. So I need some help here. What is on the board that you're pointing to and talking about?
So if you go to the newest conceptual plan, Jack is asking how the shape factor was calculated, as when he did the shape factor for the three lots, he was coming out to a different number. So I was just explaining that the shape factor is not based on the full perimeter of the lot, but just on the amount that reaches 60,000 square feet. So it mainly affects lots 1 and 2, not 3. So if you have the conceptual plan from your package in front of you, we're discussing that plan, and then how it was created smaller. I have a question.
I apologize, but may I ask a question? So maybe it's a chance. The only thing I got in my package this week, and maybe I missed something in the email, was a new demonstration plan.
Correct.
I didn't give you the conceptual plan.
Oh, sorry. The demonstration plan is titled conceptual plan.
Okay. In our process, it's called a demonstration plan.
Correct.
So we should refer to it that way, because most likely we'd be confused. Okay, so we're talking about the demonstration plan. Thank you very much.
Chief?
I often have this question. Is it this board's purview to verify the shape calculations factors? Is that our purview?
Yes.
Or do we rely on the town engineer to do that? And we...
I mean, you're elected to the board to make sure everything is correct and accurate. I would say it's good practice to always verify that we are correct and accurate with representations that we give you, so...
But we don't as a board, so we calculate everything. We rely on Sam to do that.
If someone has the expertise and wants to do that, they absolutely can do that. And if they have a discrepancy and say, you know, "We're not sure why you support this," then absolutely they can question us about that. It's all part of the process to make sure that town staff is also getting it right and providing you with the most accurate information.
So I guess, you seem to have the expertise. Are you satisfied?
Far from an expert in this, but I, yes, I am satisfied with that. Thank you, Leigh, and I didn't understand that it was that inside dimension that's based on.
And did you have any interaction with Sam? Like, do you know if his intention was that this was an affirmative comment, despite the use of the word?
Yeah, the use of the word.
The use of the word. I'm not sure, I can't speak for Sam. I'm not sure what his intent was with the use of the word "appears." Myself, Steve, and Sam mesh regarding this plan, and we all felt this demonstrated that you could yield three lots under our zoning bylaws. But again, you know, if the board feels more comfortable hearing that from Sam himself, of course. I mean, he's out of state right now at a training, which is why he couldn't make it. He thought the memo would suffice. But I'm not sure about the word "appear," but from the last conversation we had internally, yes, he felt that this demonstrated compliance.
I appreciate that, because I feel if you met and discussed it, and that was the consensus, I feel satisfied to not have to delay a process for the use of a word.
I agree.
That being said, would someone be interested in making a comment?
I have a question. Can we take a moment?
Oh, yes, go ahead, Jeff, go ahead.
So going back, then, clarification. The demonstration plan, does it now meet the lot factor requirement?
It does, yep.
Okay, so previously Sam had said it didn't. Based on the new demonstration plan, Sam says it does.
Correct, yep.
Needs the lot factor. Okay, thank you.
With someone, I'm sorry, just through the chair, we should just ask for public comment before you go.
Oh, is there any public comment? No?
I have a question.
Sure.
So, forgive my ignorance.
I'm sorry, can you come up here and give us your name and your address?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Jesse Keyes, 44 Asamiggs Road.
You can sit down if you want.
Sure, thank you. My question was, I understand there's a couple of, from, you know, excuse my ignorance, but a couple of variances that are required for this plan to go through, is that correct? No? Yeah? No, that is incorrect.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't have answered that question.
Who do you want to answer that? Attorney Fitch, would you like to answer that?
There are no variances being requested.
There are no exceptions to any of the bylaws either, correct?
There will be one request for a waiver
A waiver.
of a regulation, but...
And which was that waiver?
That was the one requiring 50 feet strip between the lots.
Okay.
We will be asking that that be waived.
Okay.
So when you apply for a cluster development, then the frontage requirements are taken away? Is that correct?
Reduced. So for a cluster, so it's a two-part process. The first thing, which is what we're discussing right now, is that the applicant can demonstrate how many lots they could yield with a conventional subdivision. So in this case, they're stating they can yield three. From reviews, it looks like they can yield three. And then what they do is they cluster them together, and there's a separate table in our zoning bylaws that delineate how much, how big a cluster lot can be. The highest is 40,000, the lowest is 5,000, and then it has a range of frontage requirements. So everything is reduced down together. So the goal is to create smaller parcels with a large swath of open space that remains open space in perpetuity.
From what I understood when I was looking at it, is the new frontage number calculated with that cul-de-sac as a part of it in this plan?
Yeah, so this is demonstrating that if a roadway were put in through a conventional subdivision, that it would meet all of our frontage requirements. When a lot fronts on a cul-de-sac, and it has over 120 feet of frontage, their frontage can be reduced to 60 feet within the interior curve of a cul-de-sac, which that's what this plan is showing. So it looks like 60 square feet on some of them. For the district you're in, it would be 200, but because it's above 120 and on that curve, you can reduce that again to 60. And all of those are within our zoning bylaw, and that's why they do not need to ask for a variance for the frontage requirements.
I just have one other question. Was there any concern about environmental review, being that it's an area of contribution to a wellhead, and that there's a contiguous forested area all the way down to a body of water behind it? And I know that when the previous low-income housing, mixed development by Mr. O'Hare was developed several years ago, that there were some environmental concerns there. They installed a, there was a lowland area in there. I believe they installed a turtle fence around the property, and, you know, there were some concerns about that kind of stuff as well. And I do know we have a nesting pair of eagles that live back in, by the pond that's behind the conservation line, behind my mother's house. So I was just wondering if that was a consideration by anybody in the layout of how the lots are made.
I believe that the health director noted it in her memo that this was a wellhead protection area. So oftentimes, this is just the first step in the process, and as they go through and start to look for a building permit, that's when you get more input from conservation or whether we'd have to refer to like a natural habitat priority, which we've done recently for a different project in case there's endangered species there. Oftentimes, they'll just, you know, sometimes remove box, or there's a swath of different things that they'll do for the area, but that usually comes after this initial...
Later in the process, sure.
May I respond to you?
Yeah, of course.
We're asking that this final plan be approved under the cluster rules. That leaves a very significant portion of the property unused, and that is an environmental concern.
Sure, yeah.
It creates no road, and it leaves intact a substantial portion of the property that is actually contiguous with what O'Hare had done on one of his open spaces.
Yeah, that kind of abuts and connects on the other side. I guess my concern as an abutter was just the, like, when you actually see the distances between them and the corridor that will be left untouched, it does become quite narrow. There's some spots where it really is like a 20-foot strip that'll be undisturbed.
I forgot exactly, is it was six acres? Is that the open, the open space side? No, that's the whole place, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the entire parcel.
It's not four.
It's two, better than two acres.
It's four point something.
Four, that's right. Six acres minus three, 40,000 lots, three, three and a half acres.
Could I ask you a question directly, sir?
Sure.
Have you ever walked the parcel?
No.
It's, there is a walking path that goes through the, that cuts across the property. I believe it's noted on, as overground, eight-foot something or other was the terminology. That's been there my whole life, and there's some really massive pine trees in there, and it's a pretty undisturbed.
Toby's Back Road?
Yeah.
That's going to be part of the open space.
So that will be undisturbed, like, kind of through the middle of the property there?
Right along the, what they call Toby's Back Road.
Yeah.
I noticed that, if there's a pathway there, it will not be touched.
Yeah, and I mean, at the end of the day, I understand, like, Mr. Bevlocka has a right to develop the property, and we're not trying to be poor neighbors or anything, but it is a, it's a, it's a really lovely piece of land. And when you walk down the path, it's one of those small areas where you feel like you are not 150 feet from Asamiggs Road, where people are trying to do 50, 50 miles an hour. You really are in a whole different space. So I guess that was just my, my thoughts or concerns on the matter. I appreciate the information.
Thank you for talking to us about this.
Yes.
Do you feel satisfied with that answer about the pathway that you were concerned about?
I mean, I'm happy to hear that it'll still exist. I do know that it's used frequently by my neighbors. I see people walking their dogs down there, people riding ATVs, all that kind of stuff. And that's been the case ever since I was a kid. We used to ride bikes down that path and cut through to go to Wakeby Lake when we're too young to ride on the road, so our parents would have us take the dirt road out. So the thought of that, being able to exist for future Sandwich residents to enjoy, I thought would be nice, but again, I do understand...
There is going to be a covenants on the open space.
Yep. Someone's going to do something with the property regardless of whatever rendition of this plan is, like, something's going to happen, and that's, that's to be expected, right? You know? So that's the way of, the way of the world, so I just wanted to...
If the pathway you're talking about is Toby's Back Road, is that, from every plan I've seen, that should remain undisturbed?
So process-wise, I don't know who to direct this to. If that was a covenant in this development plan, how would that get disturbed? What would have to happen for that to change?
What would have to happen for what?
For someone to disturb Toby's path or whatever. Because that's the question I would have. I don't understand all the process steps. We're saying it's not going to be disturbed by this covenant. What would have to...
It's not going to be disturbed by this applicant.
Yep.
You know, if some third party comes in and cuts down all the trees, you know, and is just ruining the environment, or if the neighbors use their ATVs down there and tear up the ground, I don't know that there's any enforcement of that.
So it's a public...
This applicant is not going to do anything to Toby's Back Road from the plans that I've seen.
Is there, so there's essentially no way, once the ownership is transferred to the future buyer of a future home unbuilt, essentially there's nothing in that covenant with them that would protect that vegetative area? That's now their property to do with as they please?
No, there are rules. The town has, has rules, and the three people who will eventually be there will covenant with the town that they will obey the rules.
May I ask a...
You know, when you get into the hypotheticals about, about who's protecting the environment, that's always a good question. And like, dirt bikes and ATVs are some of the biggest problems for the environment. But they're not, you know, we can't speak to that in this particular process.
I think what you're asking is, if the people that buy the three properties, they can say, yes, we won't do this, and there are rules. But the rules would be, if they did it, then what?
What's, you guys are going to come down with pitchforks and tell them to get out of town, like?
That's what I think, that's what I'm hearing too. What's the recourse?
Yeah, what's the, with the divine...
Just as somebody, I've, I've had a long career in landscape construction, and I cannot tell you how many jobs I've turned down from people asking me to do inappropriate things.
Let's see if we can get Leanne to comment on this.
So through the process, the covenants are created, and open space restrictions created that typically allows it for conservation purposes and mild recreational uses. So the land, because it was clustered, would never be able to be developed upon in that way. It all depends on who owns the covenant, like, what entity the covenant rests with. It sounds like it might rest with the three homeowners that will indeed purchase the lot. So if one of them went out and violated, it's a civil matter that the others would want the, the one that violated for it to be a restoration. The town doesn't hold these restrictions, the Conservation Commission doesn't hold these restrictions when it comes to cluster developments. There's other restrictions that we hold, or other entities hold, but in these cases, typically held by the homeowners that then purchase those lots, and then self-police between the three lots.
And if someone from the outside... Go ahead, gentlemen. Go ahead.
Make a comment, and I have a question. So with respect, and I apologize to the gentleman, to the attorney, I didn't catch your name. We received, the board received, a draft covenant, and the draft covenant, as I recall, and I may have referred to a wrong document, but the open space is going to be owned by the three lot owners, and they will own it equally. The open space will be available to be used by the owners and their guests. So you will not be able to use it unless they recognize you as a guest, so please understand that this isn't town-owned land, this isn't town-owned conservation land, based on what we've been, based on documents that we've been giving to the board. So it's gonna be based on the owners. The owners have any set restrictions on who can use this land. They own, it's part of their, their cluster development, and if I'm speaking incorrectly, Leanne, what you know, but based on the documents we've received and seen, they have, they will own it, it's not gonna be given to the town, it's not gonna be conservation land, it's not gonna be open to anybody to use. So please understand that you may be using it today, the current owner lets you use it, but you, future owners may not. I don't know if they will or won't, but future owners will have the right to not let you use it, so please understand that. Future owners may attempt to walk on it, you can't use an ATV, as the attorney said, maybe these dirt bikes can disrupt it. So please, there will be restrictions, and the restrictions will be set by the owners, and they're, they're reasonable, and they have the right to set those restrictions as you go forward, so please understand that.
So essentially, the public use of that ancient way is gonna go away?
That's correct.
Correct.
Unless somebody brings a lawyer in and says, as you said, it's an ancient way, it's certain criterias, it has to be left open, blah, 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 you know, there are laws, Massachusetts, that's a lot of laws going back there, you know, basically, you own you, and so forth, and you're running to use, but right now, they say, everything I've seen, this lot will be a cluster development. The open space will be owned, or, you know, you're only making a wrong word, because I'm not your attorney, but it will be there, and they will set the rules. And based on the draft I saw, if I'm recalling correctly, each owner for, and they set the rules, and it says in the covenant for use of them and their guests. And there has to be anyone they want, that they invite, and so forth, but it's not gonna be open to the general public, it's not like anybody else can come and use it.
But that is subject to the rights of those that might have, you know, use of the ancient way, so that doesn't just get extinguished, if there are rights...
That would be, that's a legal question that I can't speak to.
Right, I'm just clarifying, just, you know, based on what you're saying, that any rights to use an ancient way that may or may not exist, you know, implied or expressed, would still be applicable. The development of the land wouldn't override anything that may...
What I was...
Wait, hold on a minute, hold on a minute, Jeff.
No, what I was...
Did you finish that?
I'm finishing. I wanna clarify my comment.
Pardon me?
What I meant was, none of the plans you've been given show it as an ancient way. If it's to be declared as an ancient way, it either has to show by the land, or it's going to have to be legally challenged, that's what I was saying.
I, if I may, I do believe that a survey was performed on that ancient way by Ed Stone, surveyor, I think that would have been about eighteen or twenty years ago. My dad actually had a legal case with the Butters next door, with the Bakers. He opted to drive a front-end loader down the pathway, it's about twenty years ago, and widened it out in a few places, and they were quite upset, and after legal review and surveying, the case was dismissed. This is a long time ago, and I haven't reviewed these things since I was a kid, frankly, but I do think that those records may exist.
Yeah, thank you. If this is an ancient way, this changes some things, doesn't it?
Um, it does not for the board's process. This, this is not under your purview, this will be a civil matter. If someone believed they had rights to traverse the land, they would need to take that up with their own land use attorney, and it would be a civil matter between those that purchase the homes here.
But that's outside our purview.
It's outside your purview, yeah.
Okay, all right, all right, okay.
And that's the point I was trying to make.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Do you have...
My joint question for attorney, attorney, if I could.
Okay, hold on a minute, do you have any further questions?
I guess I just wanted to clarify that it, if everything moves ahead as planned, that the use of that space can't be guaranteed, and that essentially, the future homeowners are going to be the ones to decide how that surrounding wildlife corridor is managed. And essentially, they're, the only, the only legal recourse is civil between the three owners of the new lots, right? So Noah Butters or anyone else would have any legal claim to have a problem with that, and the town has no mechanism to enforce it after the plan is approved, entitled, changed.
I would think if it was an ancient way issued, that the Butters, again, outside of our purview, would have the ability to...
You would have to seek legal counsel to see if you have standing.
Yeah.
The proposed declaration of restrictive covenants require the open space lot to be left in an undeveloped condition, and that's in perpetuity, so forever. But yes, to your, everything you stated is accurate, but that's, that's the restriction put on that open space area, which is about four acres.
And essentially, and there's no, like we said, there's no penalty or, or consequence or recourse for the town to leverage or enforce that covenant?
The town's not involved, it's private land, so they're involved insofar as, you know, it makes sure it complies with the bylaws, which is why we're here, but outside of that, once it complies, then use isn't controlled by the town.
Sure.
And, and just to build on that, the enforcement of those covenants is not through the town, but we would not issue a building permit for a structure to go, like, another home, or any further development should occur on that parcel.
Sure.
Like, that would be our authority and responsibility there, but we wouldn't be enforcing the covenants.
I've just seen...
We just require that they're provided.
In the course of my career, the unfortunate reality that a lot of times, private homeowners, when they gain control of a property, it's kind of the first order of business is to open things up and make the land as they choose to, and generally, in my experience with conservation work, the consequences, they get a little slap on the wrist, and maybe they have to plant, you know, two hundred fodder gills or something, and then they, they can move on, and they get kind of what they want.
Just to expand on that, and just throw this suggestion out there, is it feasible that a Butters to the open space, not part of the subdivision, could have enforcement rights as well to maintain the undeveloped condition of the premises? So say, for example, those three homeowners did get together and decide to put a go-kart track on the area, and neither were going to, you know, civilly penalize the other, there being no recourse, could the rights to enforce extend civilly to a Butters?
A quick response to that would be no. Why would anybody give away enforcement rights to outsiders? It just doesn't make any sense to, to make yourself vulnerable like that. I do have a little bit of comfort for Mr. Keys. If what you're concerned about is the use of Toby's Back Road, this property only claims ownership to the center line of where that is actually located on the ground, so that the other side, half of the road, is, is not part of this cluster development. And so if you are using that, this, this applicant, this owner, has absolutely no, no say over anything for your other half. But what I'm telling you is that there are no intentions to do anything with that road. It's deliberately, it's no accident that, that the open space is over there. We don't want a dispute with any of the neighbors, and we can avoid it by building that as open space, including, and this is all done deliberately.
Until the owners get there, and then it may not be the, your client's intentions, but once it's developed, it's out of his hands as well.
Then, it's true, things change, but we're, we're setting it up in such a way that, that there is, there is no, there's actually no reason, no motive, to do anything with the three owners. The three lots will be, will be toward the other end of the property. And I can tell you from experience, I live in one of these little developments with seven lots, myself, and I don't think I've ever walked on the open space. Nobody's ever done anything. It just, this is only a three-lot development.
We have, Jeff, you have a comment?
Well, I do have a comment, but I also have a question for the attorney, as I mentioned before, and so my comment is, this, you know, it says that we can't predict the future. And my experience is that when, and not in a negative way, it's a different property, but my experience is that once the property has gotten a hold of, they will restrict it, and it's getting more and more prevalent. You can read it in the, in the Enterprise, you know, often, about, there was a bond over the, what they call the, the old game farm, and, and a new owner bought property, and they put up a fence, that's their right, and, and so people that used to walk their dogs, they can't walk their dogs anymore. That's my experience, my experience, and they had a property that was recently sold, and they would, say that a trailer was commonly used, the first thing they would do is put it aside, you can't use it anymore. It's unfortunate, that's their right, but, but I just wanna make sure that we don't, we don't underplay this. That's my experience, it may be different, but that's my experience, and I understand why people do, and it happens. And you know what I wanted to make, was you referred to, you know, the property on the other side, because I understand, and correct that, the open property on the other side is similar to this open property in, in a future instance. The property on the other side is owned by the owner, the owner's ownership, so it's not, the town is the owner, so if you're using Toby Road, the other half, you're only using it because they're right to, you know, they could do a future sale, you can use half of the Toby Road, so please understand that if you're using it, doesn't mean you can't get it used, you may have to go to the court later or something, but... Am I correct? I, I looked it up, and I already looked at the set map and so forth, and I looked at the infestment card, it looks like the open space on the other side that's adjacent to this open space is owned by that development on the other side.
I believe that's correct, yeah.
So they, you know, so, yes, and, and use it and so forth, and, you know, it happens a lot of times, so, so it's likely to go until it becomes a problem, and then the fence inside will open, and the doors and so, and so forth, and, and, you know, that's, I can't predict what's gonna happen here, but let's not say nothing's happening, because history tells us that's a problem, I think. So if I can ask my question of the attorney, it's been commented a number of times that there's no plan to take down any of the beautiful pine trees that we refer to, or do anything over the Toby Road area. If the board put that in as a condition, would the client accept it?
I can't answer that.
You'd almost need a forester to do a survey of the, to even figure out what, how to work around that. I sympathize about that.
I guess, I guess I'm, what are we talking about here? If this gentleman claims rights to use my client's property, I would respectfully ask you to produce the documentation. As far as we know, this is a piece of property that is, that is owned by the applicant with nobody else having any other rights. Across this one corner, there are the remnants of a road on this, and nobody, it's not used as a road, and that's fine. If this gentleman has the right to use that road, he's got it by prescription, by grant? What is it? And that, that should be a matter between us, not involved in the planning board. And I would invite him, truly do, we're not, my client is not looking for a problem or a fight here. We designed this carefully to stay away from potential issues, and it's our intention to leave it that way, at least leave it under the rules of the cluster development lot, open space. But I'm telling you, if, well, I don't even wanna speculate, there are abuses that sometimes take place where landowners say enough. I don't think that's happening there, but I just want you, it goes both ways. And when you have a proper deed to a piece of property, it's yours, and it's not theirs. If he has a right to use this, please show us, be happy to accommodate.
Well, I think we've discussed what, Mr. Keys, what you have the ability to do, separate from any activities of the planning board. That make sense?
Yes.
Okay. And we appreciate you coming forward and bringing up this information, because
Thank you.
it obviously enlightens us as well.
And if I could just say something as well, like, of all the people in town who could have bought the property, I know Mr. Bevulakwa, he's a nice guy, he's a stand-up guy, a business person, I don't have any, like, ill will about that. Frankly, I got noticed a little bit late, I probably would have had some of these conversations, maybe privately with you or Mr. Bevulakwa, before we got to this stage. I just kind of, frankly, my mom let me know just a few days before, and my sister got married last weekend, and we were out of town, I just kind of scrambled, so these are conversations that, and concerns that may have been able to be switched before we got to this stage.
Yeah, I would encourage you...
Let's do that. To try to figure something out that works for everyone, and I do have the understanding that, I, I helped Mr. Stone on the survey when I was a little kid, and I did do the, and I was hired to do the turtle fence for Mr. O'Hare when I was about seventeen years old, so I was tangentially a part of that development next door. And I remember a neighbor who built their house after us being quite upset that people were building houses there, and I looked at him as a teenager and said, what's that square thing behind you that you live in? That's a house, these people get houses too, so like, I'm not unrealistic about the inevitability of that.
And Attorney Fitch, I think, I think what you're suggesting is around me makes a lot of sense.
Let's have a chat about this, I, I don't see any reason why you won't be completely satisfied.
Oh, that'd be great, appreciate that.
But no, but you can't make promises for the future.
For sure.
I do understand, once, once the die is cast and someone else is paying, right?
But it sounds like we've got reasonable people here, and I'm sure that you...
We're not zealots, I'm not gonna tie myself to a tree or anything.
I don't know, you sounded, you sounded a little zealot about those turtles.
I know it's, it sounds boring, but the design that you've seen is not by accident, and it is to address...
Appreciate that.
...this issue.
Well, thank you, Mr. Keys, and...
Thank you.
I believe Attorney Fitch would like us to, to vote on approving the existence of the three lots.
Is it a formal vote, or are we just doing more, it's more of a straw, right?
It's more of a consensus of the board.
So it's not a vote?
It's not a binding vote, it's not a typical vote that we would take through this process, but it's giving the attorney a consensus of, that the board would move forward on this point.
All right, so let's, let's get some feedback. Julie, can we start with you?
Yeah, I, I approve it.
Okay. Jeff?
I also approve it. I did have one comment, though, about the whole issue. It seems like the concern is the lack of third-party oversight of the open space. Is that correct?
It's just been my experience that once people are paying property taxes on a piece of land, that they, justifiably to some point, they feel entitled to do what they want. And I understand people have freedom of will, like, what are you going to do, you know?
So I'm just going to throw out an idea for Attorney Fitch to consider, and Mr. Keys to consider, is a CR, something that your client would consider, conservation restriction.
Again, Jack, I want to bring this back to getting a vote on the three, the, okay, so.
So I'm in favor of voting.
Yes, yeah. Oh, go ahead. So I, yeah, I think I'm fine with the three, you know, the proposed plan, the way that it's drafted, yeah.
I'm fine with the three lots.
Jeff?
I have a question, Leanne. So we're taking an informal, usually refer to these as straw polls, and we're taking an informal, to give the applicant an understanding as to where we think we stand as they continue to invest money into this development or whatever, and that's not typical for this board. When we get eventually to the point of voting, we will formally vote on a demonstration plan? Is that part of the process?
It's not. We typically don't vote on the demonstration plan. We just accept that a plan demonstrates the lot, yielding those lots. Then you will have two motions that you'll be required to do. The first one would be to vote to endorse the approval not required. That will be submitted. You'll get a new approval not required. You'll vote to endorse that, which would create the lot division. And then I have, me and Steve have prepared a decision, a special permit finding decision. So the permits that you go through, that you get ahead of time to go over, you would go through procedural history, findings, and conditions. And that would be the vote for the cluster special permit. So it's a two-pronged approach, two votes.
Okay, so, Gilly, I'm trying to understand the relevance of what we're doing, but I will continue to participate, don't get me wrong, but if we never vote on it, I'm not sure what the relevance is that, you know, we agree with it or don't agree with it. But I'll put that aside for the moment. I'm struggling with that. So you asked me for my position. My position is the same as you can, is that I think three lots can be demonstrated. I don't even think they've been demonstrated. And that's also something I have from engineering. I have questions for engineering. And, you know, we haven't had the opportunity to ask engineering those questions. And so in a future meeting, we can, this gets continually my understanding, I'll be able to ask those questions, and we'll have further dialogue on the demonstration plan. Do I think eventually, you know, you can show three lots? Yes. The really, I always ask the question again about the process, is that, and just for clarification, I want to ensure, Leanne, Steve, short-term, last year, and this is about, I go in and ask for guidance and clarification, you want to know who's our regulations, what you can do and so forth. And I asked about this demonstration plan. And the question I asked at the time, I said, can you waive any requirement, or does a demonstration plan have you fully compliant? And if I recall, the discussion was right at the end, and we had, you see, what you told me was a demonstration plan has to be fully compliant. So given that has to be fully compliant, I'm just looking for engineering to tell me, hey, this plan you're fully compliant. And I don't have that. What I have is, it appears to be fully compliant. And that doesn't tell me it is fully compliant. And the requirement is, we discussed, unless I interpreted that incorrectly, it has to be fully compliant. So right now, you know, we respect your motion, and taking a straw poll, you know, what's your opinion? My opinion is, I need to speak to engineering. So from that, I don't vote yes or no. I'm saying, I want to hear from engineering. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. I feel comfortable with it as well. But it also sounds like Attorney Fitch, you're looking for a continuance.
Yes, ma'am. To the next meeting, when we will come back with a three lot plan.
Very good. Would someone be willing to make a motion on that?
I make a motion to continue this matter to the next meeting, which is going to be June 17th. Is there a second? Julie, is there a second? Okay. We have to do a roll vote, so. Agree, yes.
I agree. Jeff, are you with?
I vote yes on the continuation. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next item we need to address is, is there anything else we, I think we're set with you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Is this the D? Did I get that right?
I'm sorry. Mr. Keys, yes.
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 Thank you for coming in. I wanted to thank you for coming in.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you for coming. We truly appreciate it.
Okay, we have to do, update this, right?
The signature sheet, yes, I believe next on the agenda is.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Future zoning amendments.
All right, new business. There is no new business to discuss, so for board discussion, we will move on to future zoning amendments. And, yeah?
Sure. So as we had discussed prior to annual town meeting, we were going to come back before you to discuss some housing opportunities as future zoning amendments. I thought it'd be a good opportunity to kind of just let you know on the different things that we're working on, and what we're hoping to go through this year and next year, what our long-range plans are, and then really get guidance from this board as to how, what are your priorities that you wish the staff would work on first. So kind of just the sequence of events from us. So, you know, the first one, as you probably noticed, the short-term rental bylaw adoption. So we tried to adopt this at annual town meeting through a general bylaw. And the board originally looked at the draft that staff had created and recommended to move it forward to the board of selectmen. For new members, general bylaws are, they're not the purview of a planning board, but because this board generally drafts all bylaws for the town, as it relates to land use, the select board thought it was a good idea for you to continue with this process. It was clear that the feedback we received at town meeting was that they wanted a lot more community outreach and community input from both camps, those that wanted to see regulations and those that did not want to see regulations. And as someone that doesn't work in the short-term rental industry, you know, our goal is not to diminish people's ability to rent their homes. So we want to know what types of regulations really affect the operation of their business. So our first plan for the short-term rental adoption would be to do a community-wide survey to try and reach a larger audience to discuss if rental regulations is something the majority of the residents would want to see, and if so, what types of things would they want to see regulated. This endeavor was done in Barstables several years ago, and funnily enough, it actually came back that they did not want to see rental regulations. And so it gives always a good placeholder as to where we need to move forward with this. We did not receive much feedback at all last time we went through this process. So it was very difficult to know whether we were doing something that was supporting the town and the residents and those that rent and those that live near rentals, or whether it was not. So we're assuming that this would take us probably about a year, and we would hopefully be presenting this to you in January, maybe December, with our fact-finding mission and our public outreach, so that we could have a more, a bylaw that was more in line with the residents of the community and what they would like to see, and that hopefully we could push it forward to main town meeting next year.
So how would that, how does that work, where the questionnaire is compiled and sent out to voters, or?
Yeah, so we would push it out through the Sandwich Enterprise, through all of our social media, on the town website. Usually Sandwich Community Television is very good about posting ads, about where to pick it up. We always do printed copies as well as online versions. We did this through our master planning process, and reached the largest number we've ever reached for visioning for the town. Usually get, you know, about 20, and we reached over 300 in that case. So you generally get a lot more feedback if we do something that doesn't require in-person participation. So at least would start our framework for how we would need to vision this for the future.
Any comments or feedback? Make sense? Jeff has his hand up. Oh, I'm sorry, Jeff.
I was just going to comment, because I've got a lot of personal experience, and so just share my personal experience, and I'd share this with you, and Steve. So I live in a community that has about 130 homes. Half of them live on a corporate lot, and the other half are almost on a half a lot. Approximately 130 rentals, seasonal rentals. I'm very fortunate, I have three seasonal rentals around me, and the owners do a good job managing their properties. And the kind of things they love at the town meeting are this noise and trash. I'm very fortunate, like I said, I have three very respectful owners. Now, those are also local, this is an interesting comment. Then we have had some issues over, not even, with noise and trash. And that is, you know, one of the things that I talked about at the town meeting. So I think this is an important bylaw to look at. We need to keep it in balance as we, you know, as we go forward. The other thing I was going to share is I have a sleeping company, an individual staff, to speak with me. I had spoken, I think, three times at a town meeting. They said, oh, I want to talk to you about this zoning bylaw on seasonal rentals. And their concern was, they said, can we do something about seasonal rentals being owned by corporations or lots that don't, are not owned? And I said, yeah, that's a great question. And I said, that gives you a good question as to what we can and can't regulate. What I wanted to share with the board, that it was one of the, I think I've seen it, I'm lying, but I'll save it. You know, the, like I said, I have three properties around me. They're all locally one individual lives in New Bedford, the other lives in Connecticut, I think, and I can say that, but they're individual, their families that rent them. And I know them, and I talk with them, and they have great rentals. But, so that was a concern that we had at the town meeting. I, you know, I would encourage, despite the big issues that we've got at the meeting, I would encourage you to look at this. So, thank you, thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff. And to Jeff's point, there are communities that do regulate ownership when it comes to short-term rentals. Province Town is one of them. It did pass through the Attorney General's office. They regulate who is allowed to own a short-term rental. They really promote that it's res, people that are first and second homeowners here, that people don't have more than three, I believe is the number, that corporations, LLCs, and fractional ownership is not allowed. And they have a compliance company they go through. Currently, we're doing all of this in-house to comply with the building code changes that also occurred kind of around the same time. So it's something we can also look at and then provide feedback to you as to whether or not residents of this town would like to see that.
And who makes up the questions? Do we outsource it, or?
Typically, staff would do it for, yeah, for something like this. We usually go to a lot of different towns that have short-term rental regulations. We start pulling for them, pulling from all those different ones to see what type of regulations are out there. And then people can kind of let us know their opinions as to, is this an overreach? Is this balanced? Is this fair? You know, that's all the type of information that we would want to know. So if we're good with short-term rentals, then you're more for regarding that.
I think so. Everybody's okay with that.
Yeah, so the next one would be stormwater. So we are required to update our stormwater bylaws that are within our zoning bylaws for compliance with NIPD, which is the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. We are all going to a training in several weeks' time regarding this, but we do have some updates we're going to need to make to our zoning bylaw. Our town engineer, Sam Jensen, he'll be spearheading that initiative, as he can speak much more elegantly to that matter than I can. So that's basically all I know right now. So I have not asked Sam if he's hoping that this will go to a special town meeting, or whether this would be for annual town meeting. So it'll either be something that we would, for compliance purposes, have to work on this summer, or otherwise we would start working on it in, probably December, January timeframe for an annual town meeting.
Sounds like we have to do this, so I'm for it. Anybody else have any comment on this?
Okay, perfect. So then, housing. So as the board knows, you are in charge of the Housing Production Plan for the Town of Sandwich, and also the Local Comprehensive Plan, which is our master plan for a 10-year growth in development, conservation, preservation, all of that good stuff for land use. We definitely would like direction from the board on what housing initiatives you would like us to move forward on, short-term, long-term, this year, next year. We have, you know, as we know, we had to comply with the state's mandate for accessory dwelling units. I know that there were some elements of that bylaw that we thought that we would speak about in June, come back and readdress. So that's on the table to talk about moving forward for this year, if that's what the committee would like. We've also been taking a look at utilizing and creating more pocket neighborhoods for additional housing units. In order to do so, we have large lot zoning in a lot of areas, and maybe a good way to do this would be to, you know, utilize shared driveways or reduce some frontage requirements or lot sizes. We could provide an overlay. We could look at providing some affordability, whether it be in a payment in lieu of creating an affordable unit or something to that effect. But some other communities have some pretty good bylaws regarding that, so that we could even just try to create, promote more affordable housing. But then also, we have a lot of underutilized land in town that just doesn't meet frontage, could be accessed by a shared driveway. I think it's something that Attorney Fitch is a proponent of. So that's something that we could look at for this year or for next year, just depending on what you prefer to task us with for this year. And then another housing issue that we've looked at is Section 4450 of our zoning bylaws. It's the Affordable Housing Conditional Density Development Bylaw, which is a mouthful. It's a great bylaw in the intent of it, but in practicality, it does not work. There's asterxes on that table that make it so difficult to develop, that A, you wouldn't get the style of development you would want to see in the community, and B, it ends up just creating the need to have stacked buildings as opposed to like a cottage court-style development. So we've had several developers, one recently, but over the years, come in and try to utilize this bylaw. There's a percentage of affordable housing. The more, the more units that you have affordable, the more density you can yield. But unfortunately, it's the asterxes that say, if you don't have bought a development just like this, you have to meet the setback for that zoning district. So you could be looking at a 45-foot setback. It also states that you have to put in a roadway. If we could do a shared driveway onto a cottage court where two units were affordable out of six, it would create these pocket neighborhoods that would help us with our affordable housing goals that wouldn't be detrimental to the community. And, you know, if they could help us reach our SHI, if they were rental units, they'd all be counted, we could start to maybe increase our percentage there. For this one, if this was something the board wanted us to go forward with, we would reach out to the development community to try and make sense of what could be done here. What is the, what is the ratio for affordability that would make a project economic for them? And we would go through that with the development community. And then we could cite maybe, you know, through the board, where we would see this type of development that we want to see. Do we want to keep it in a certain area? Do we want it town-wide? We can have all those discussions and move forward. So that's kind of what we have on housing. If there's anything the board sees that we're not seeing for housing, you know, more than welcome to bring forward suggestions, but really looking for priorities.
What people feel about the housing initiatives?
They love the ideas.
Yeah, I think it's definitely good to address and talk about it. And then maybe we can either do it now or later. I wanted to know if there was any updates with the AG's office coming back in response to anybody's bylaws, if anybody's, you know, with ADUs, if anybody's bylaws have been rejected and for what reasons?
Yes, so I did mean to forward you the first one that I had received, that were some instances of rejection based on, which was, which was interesting, because I would have interpreted it the same way, but it wasn't rejected, that any type of discretionary approval would not be allowed. But in instances where you have non-conforming lots, an increase to a nonconformity always requires a special permit. And that's not based on the use of the accessory dwelling unit. I may be going down a rabbit hole here, so stop me if I am, but they also ruled that that would not require a special permit. So I think we were all a little shocked regarding that, because we thought that that would. So I think we were all a little shocked regarding that because we thought that that would. But so that was the first one that we, that came back to us. But I can forward you all of the ones so far that came back. You can see the reasons why some, some areas were, were asterxes. We're not gonna let you enforce that.
Right. That would be appreciated, thanks.
So I think housing, everyone feels that's important. Oh, Jeff, go ahead.
Yeah, I think Attorney Fitch has his hand up. During, during that discussion, I don't think we can take input from, we talked about this one in the area. And you can correct me, but I, though I'd like to hear from him, I don't think we're allowed, we can take input. But we, you can, you can share on that. What I'm trying to say about housing was, this board has a history of addressing housing. Affordable housing is an issue in the county. And as long as I, we've been addressing it, going way back to when, you know, there was the change in the bylaw on cottage conversions, you know, cottage communities conversions and so forth. We put a requirement there, you convert one, you have to have some units affordable. We did the ADU and unfortunately had to go back and revisit because of the state. But we've been, you know, it's been noted that this board is upfront on some of these issues. So I encourage us to continue, continue to do that. A question I have with Ann, we, and I wasn't exactly sure what you were talking about a minute ago relative to the public. At a previous town meeting, we wanted to change the ratio. And we voted on, and the moderator at the time, not the town moderator, said, oh, we need a two-thirds. But as it turned out, we needed a majority. So you, you, the town submitted that to the Attorney General for approval, that even though the state at the town meeting was two-thirds, it only seemed majority. We did get it already, in fact, it only was two-thirds, I think, by one vote. We didn't end up with that.
That was ultimately approved by the Attorney General's office. So that is, in fact, a bylaw. We did change the ratios and make it easier to create affordable mixed-use housing in the BL1 and the B2 districts. So that is in effect, we've had one permit so far.
Nice. I was also gonna, you know, again, your personal experience, I think I do. And I share this with you, because you were talking about something. But I had, and I share this with you, exactly what we want the AG to do. This paper is gonna turn the second quarter into an ADU. A 10-year wide, I think, we're seven in the early eighties. And they're gonna, and they're gonna get by law in the 1900 square foot, which is nice. And they're gonna convert it into an ADU and if they are allowed that, let them stay. That, I mean, if anyone, if it had to come, I don't think we're going for it. Between the cost of living and taxes and so forth and having a home, that was really big to me. In fact, that made a cost of that a quarter of a lot. But they're gonna get a return into an ADU, which is to allow them to remain. So, you know, I've poured off, you know, in, in the history of this board and the previous members, you know, we continue to do good things in the affordability. I would encourage you to support it, stay on, looking at additional opportunities and so forth as we go forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. So the question is, do we, do we as a board endorse these three initiatives that you've proposed?
So I'm looking for direction as to priorities. So we can, if you endorse all of these, we can, we can work on all of these. This will be a lot to present at one town meeting. They need to be spaced out so they're digestible and that we can do as much background information as possible. So we're really looking for a direction on housing as to the sequence of events. Which one would you like us to undertake first and to, and to move forward from there?
I, I have an idea of priorities. I don't think it's gonna surprise anyone on this board, but, but mine is, but I'm gonna state it anyhow. We lost something at town meeting this year. And I think a priority should be to restore what was taken away. And I'm talking about the size limitation on ADUs. We need to get back to the 9,000 square feet habitable or an equivalent in gross square footage. And it should be a bylaw that's put forward at the next town meeting, whether it's special or annual, that does that.
If you all feel the same, we're discussion, yeah?
I agree.
That's fine. Perfect, okay. So the, I'm, I'm sorry, Jeff, how do you feel about that one?
Well, I support the idea. I also got approached on this one at the town meeting. I support the idea, but what I, we're confused, we can't, is by, if, if, if we give you this as a priority, what might I take out? That's, that's, that's my confusion.
So most years, we have a special town meeting. This one is very fresh in everyone's minds as it is in staff. So it would be, it would be a simpler objective to continue on this endeavor right now and try to get this through for a special town meeting. And then, once we pass that, we could, we could move on to the next one, whichever one is, is, is the next highest priority, then we would move to that bylaw. Depending on what else you want us to put forward for fall town meeting, we could potentially do two housing bylaws and one of the others. Or, you know, it's, it's kind of just looking for priorities for the board as to which one you want us to move forward with for. We typically don't like to present more than three. As you saw from the last town meeting, zoning can take a very long time. It can be very confusing, there can be a lot of questions. So we don't want to push it into a two-night affair if we do too many zoning articles.
Maybe Section 4450, if it's not working practically, that might be a good one to tackle.
And I believe Attorney Fitch had a question and Jeff commented that this is not a public hearing. So it is really up to the chair whether or not you wish to take a comment from the, the audience. So, Attorney Fitch?
My request was through the chair. May I?
Yes, you may.
Throw in a few remarks? I wanted to say, you know, it was 1970 and I was seated where Ann is. And I've been trying to advocate for housing ever since. Not a lot has gone well. Sandwich does not have a good reputation in terms of addressing housing. If you break down some of the, the rules that we have, I could say this all leads up to an understanding of where the definition of snob zoning came from. I applaud Leanne because I, I have complained about this conditional density thing since it was started. Nobody has ever used it. It was a joke. And she made a genuine effort to make it workable already. It hasn't really worked. And I applaud the idea that it's back on the table. And I, I hope you will, you will address it the best you possibly can. Another thing, it's always one of my pet things, frontage, overrated. Frontage creates roadways, which creates expense, which creates asphalt. There are other ways to access lots. And there are ways that we can, we can create new lots to access them without frontage. Every once in a while, you meet somebody who lives in a great house down a little gravel street. And you'll find there's no frontage, but it was done in 1945. Think of it, a very simple tweak to some of the rules. We can find a way, an alternative to frontage. The idea of the conditional density thing is like a mini 40B. We don't need the many large, the 300-unit project that is surely on the horizon. But we need to, we need to show progress and with smaller things. And, and that bylaw could work for that. We've squandered so many opportunities to encourage small apartment uses. If, if you ever look at the rule as it exists today, nobody would ever build it. And it can be changed. And you guys have the authority to start that. And I wish you well. There are things you can do because if we don't do it as a community, the state's gonna do it for us. Look at the story of the doctrine of merger. When there was upzoning and people owned two lots together, they had to be merged. Well, that was a technique to slow down or stop development. That's what it was, plain and simple. Well, guess what? The state has now undone that. The state did it. The same with the ADUs. The state is mandating things. And unless we take charge, the state's gonna mandate more. Housing is a crisis. And it's not just 40B. It's all manner of things that we can do without the benefit of 40B. So thanks for letting me spout off a little bit. I wish you well. There is, there are many little things that can be tweaked within the rules that we have to encourage people to create some housing. Just the, it's just the number, it isn't, I hate to even just call it affordable housing, but that is, it's a term and that's what we're looking for. But if we increase the inventory of housing, it's gonna make it more accessible. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's great. Jeff holds on his hand up.
I'm sorry, Jeff?
Yeah, I had a question for Leanne, but first, let me speak. I wanna make a comment, we expect Attorney Fitch's comment. You know, I accept that there are bylaws in the way that, I think everybody would agree with me, I think. I think, I know there are bylaws in the way that making housing affordable, more affordable, more accessible. I do object to the comment that says, we as a town, therefore we as a board, have not addressed it. And I've been on this board, I think, for over 10 years. I don't know what I'm, before, I don't know what I'm, 1970. I can tell you from 10 years I've been there. And the individuals that we had on the board, we had a real reason, really the rest of us saw it on this. And thank God for him that he did because we, we did address him and we changed the cottage code. And we have that written down as a town to moving forward. There's a lot of inertia that you have to overcome. We started at the town meeting, we respect to the rental unit. Leanne did a great job of trying to present it and argue it and answer the question, but there's a lot of inertia against it. We'll get it. It's just like housing, we'll get it. You don't make the success the first time. But we as a board have been and encourage us to continue doing it. I don't know what went on in 1970 or 80 or 90, 2000, 2000, January 2000. But I do know what went on the last eight, nine years. Jen's been there on the board for quite a while. There were folks like Bob and, and others. And, and we haven't been paying attention to it. We haven't pushed it. There is inertia. It just, it's, you know, it's like the discussion I had earlier about, that's public space. You know, people use it, they wanna continue using it, but somebody owns it, they've got to deal with that. Well, it's a sandwich for a while, I was like, as we go forward, but we'll get it. Unfortunately, you know, you know, this comment about the state being too, too young? You know, unfortunately, we had a bad ADU bylaw. And then the state came down with something that really tied our hands. So we were in charge in front of the state and then the state kind of wished it back. But we'll get it. You know, I, 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 I think as a board, we have been, we will put things to do it as a board. That's my opinion from being on this board, seeing what we've done, seeing some of the recognition that we've received. And, and, and applauding to those that served before me, served with me, and serving now. My question to you, Leanne, was the, the rental one, really is something, I think, because like I say, my personal experience, I'm fortunate because the people around me have very good renters. But I know there are some that are not. So, but I was trying to see if we prioritized what was asked for, bringing back ADUs, which I support. Does that mean we won't address the rental issue?
No, we, we would address the rental issue just because it's a general bylaw. It would kind of almost be separate to our three zoning bylaws that we would be pushing forward. So I mean, we could see if we thought we'd be ready for a special town meeting. I have a feeling with the amount of community outreach we're, we're planning on doing, we're looking more at annual town meeting this year for the short-term rental bylaw adoption. But, you know, for, for potentially stormwater and then one of the housing initiatives, we were hoping to have something crafted and ready to present for special town meeting, which would hopefully be in November. And then potentially maybe one more like the, the clear-cutting bylaw or an additional housing endeavor, just depending on, on what the board wanted to, wanted to support.
Thank you for your contribution.
Oh, correct me if I'm wrong, but the short-term rental bylaw was really being driven by that case on one of the islands, correct? That it was held because there was no bylaw regulating short-term rentals, therefore, short-term rentals were not a permissible use. So from, I guess, a priority standpoint, it hasn't been challenged, you know, yet in Sandwich. It's possible, but so prioritizing, you know, maybe that might just be for consideration.
Yes. A part of me during the presentation for the short-term rentals, when they were talking about indefinitely postponing it, wanted to say, just approve it modified and just allow the use. And we'll come back with regulations. It's, it's hard to really speak about whether or not it's, it's allowed in your community. There is varying case law that contradicts one another on it. We have what happened in Nantucket, that a court ruled that this was a commercial use. Your bylaw did not expressly allow it. That's still all being litigated through appeals. We don't have a definitive on that. But then we had a case in Quincy that came out and said that this person was renting for four years and that they were vested in their right to, to rent. So it's, it's not clear-cut exactly whether or not this use is permissible in your community in absence of even having it referenced in a bylaw. So the, the safest bet is, you know, to introduce it into a bylaw, allow the use expressly, and then to build off of it some regulations, which, which we could do. We could do a two-step process this year if the board thought that made sense to first go forward and just expressly allow it through a general bylaw and then come back the following year with sample conditions and regulations.
Yeah, I like that. I don't know how other people feel about that.
And by expressly allowing it, essentially, you're not changing anything. You're just, you're acknowledging the use.
We're acknowledging it. So currently, we, that has always been our stance here. We think that it's a historic vested use within our community that with the adoption of these online platforms has slightly changed. But we've always seen it as an extension of residential use that hasn't changed. So we've never gone through with any enforcement measure on a property that was being used as a short-term rental. That was always the trans stance on it. So nothing would change if we just expressly allowed it.
So perhaps we could do the two-tiered and just to get it out, you know, for next meeting, if there's a special meeting, depending on how we roll matters out, maybe just to try to see if we can get it acknowledged, at least to then maybe continue the community outreach.
Sure. Yep, if that's the direction the board would like to go in, we can absolutely prepare something like that, have you looking at it.
How do people feel about that?
Seems like an easy lift to just get that initial vote.
Yeah. Jeff, you have comment?
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna say, I, I think what Leanne just addressed is, is good. And you know, in mind, what we need to try to do, which is, you know, is, don't overcome this inertia. You can attack it all at once, or you can have incrementally and replace it, which is incremental. Unfortunately, what happened at the town meeting was a state required, got confused with what Leanne was talking about. The state required that the inspection now, it's part of the building code. And people thought that what Leanne was discussing required an inspection. She tried to explain to them, no, inspection is a new, as part of the building code. We have to accept the new building code. This is something else. And the two got wrapped together. I think that added to why it went down in defeat. And so she, she did a great job trying to explain to them, no, no, no. But people got up and they were just angry. I gotta do these inspections, it'll cost me so much money, I gotta get them all done, I didn't plan on it. And that put it down in defeat. So I think the idea will lie and say, hey, look at the first step. Let's acknowledge that they're, that we can do this in town. I think that'll make individuals, you know, like the real, the realty agency that was there spoke everything against them. Acknowledge that, okay, we need something that's a dead protection, we've got something in. And then start taking the question of, okay, what do we need to regulate? As I said, it might be like trash and noise are the two big issues. Thank you.
So we're gonna, I think that's the action we'll take on the short-term rental.
Perfect, yeah, yeah, we can prepare that.
I think we all agree that the stormwater thing. I think we all agree that the stormwater thing, you know, after we address that, so. And the housing initiatives?
Yes, yep. So we'll start with the accessory rental structures. I think we got plenty of feedback and kind of know what's lacking, what's not. We can look at what we think we should best put forward. There's kind of two different avenues we can go. So we might, we might present both and see which direction you want us to go in. And then we can zone in on that one and recraft language as we, as we move forward. Secondly, the redraft of section 4450. So we can plan on that for potentially an annual town meeting. And then, thirdly, we can, we can look into relaxing lot sizes or frontage requirements. That needs more, more thought as to how exactly we would do that. The goal is never to change the character of the town or to ruin any of our natural resources. So that takes very careful planning and consideration. We also have a lot of coastal resiliency that we would need to build in. And then depending on areas, I mean, there's a historic portion within Forestale, there's a historic portion in the village. You'd be very sensitive to the growth and development patterns that are there. So that's going to take a lot of exploratory work to figure out if we could do something that would promote affordable housing, but be sensitive to the environment that we're currently in. And then, so we moved on past housing, clear-cutting. So we are having an issue. We have an existing bylaw at 3500, which is landscaping and screening. And then what builds off of that is erosion control. It doesn't mandate that you need to have a building permit before you clear land. So we are having issues where property owners or companies are coming in, they're clear-cutting the land, we're getting a lot of runoff, sediment, drainage issues. And then they're coming to us and say, I want to do a contractor's yard, or I want to do a multifamily housing complex. And the answer is, oh, you actually can't do that. And then the land is sitting vacant because there was no pre-planning prior to the excavation. So we're, we're, we would just like a little bit more of a planning process so that, not that people can't cut down the trees on their lot or prevent any clear-cutting occurring, but that at least we would have some foresight and be able to know that the development, A, could happen, B, can we look at keeping 30% of the existing vegetation on the site instead of re-establishing shit after the fact? That's what the bylaw mentions, you have to keep 30%. If you cut it down, you have to re-establish it. Obviously, we would promote keeping the existing vegetation, trees in place, and be able to plan your development around that. And then that would also help us with erosion control. It's also interesting because the Cape Cod Commission, through their development of regional impact permits, if you clear-cut more than two acres, you're required to do a development of regional impact review with the commission. But in their regulations, it also states that during the building permit process. So if someone clear-cuts without permits, we can't refer them to the Cape Cod Commission because it didn't meet their threshold of a building permit. We then don't get to have any conversation with the applicant to talk about their uses and how they could, you know, look at the site plan and see how it could be formulated. So we're kind of just a little bit behind the eight ball on this topic.
It seems like there's some good overlap here with MPDES.
Yes, yes.
So the clear-cutting that you're seeing, are these acre lots?
We just had one on Chase Road, which was three and a half acres.
So.
So they're breaking another law.
So, yeah, they are breaking federal law.
I mean, it's completely clear-cutting.
Under the Clean Water Act, any site that disturbs more than an acre is subject to the construction general permit under MPDES. By right, they're supposed to submit materials to the EPA in the state. Massachusetts is one of the states that hasn't delegated, so it's still regulated by the EPA. So I think there's, you know, you maybe be able to blend these two and cover this as part of the MPDES bylaw.
Yeah, we could absolutely do that. We could just do it as one, one amendment. Because a lot of the erosion control that follows this section, it's, it's all linked together. Basically, one follows the other down.
That's a great idea. Great idea. Jeff, do you have any comments? Yep, go ahead.
Oh, Jeff, you're on mute.
Yeah, I apologize for that. My grandson in the background was crying if I didn't. I was going to share, again, I'd share this with Leanne, but I can't speak. Two years ago when I ran, reran for reelection, I took advantage and I went to the Democratic Committee in town, which has a candidate thing. And you can go with talk and so forth. And I was running out of hope, and so they said, you know, I didn't need to go. But I always think, man, you know, those things, primarily second-hand back. And it was interesting, this issue came up at that meeting about clear-cutting. And then, you know, they asked about what we have and so forth, and shared with them what we had and so forth. Talked to them a little bit about it. And they said, you know, you're behind the times, you know, Plymouth has a, they're, they're violating ADU. And I went and did some research, I get back to the individual. As it turns out, what Plymouth does, and what the individual was referring to, was when you put in ground-based solar roofs, and what you, what you're required to do there and so forth. And I shared that with them. So, you know, I applaud what Leanne is suggesting here. You know, this fact that it's done after the fact. And I don't know about the CPA and how that fits so forth, if that's still after the fact. But it's this thing about getting upfront, that we really need to get a hold of it. And I would say, you know, just that one example, every member that was there in Democratic Committee members, as well as there were guests that showed up to see me here, if you can, they say, they all agree that we need to do something in Sandwich. And, you know, I suspect your personal experiences, like I did, just driving through town, all of a sudden it seems a lot clear. And I, and I support, right, and we talked earlier, to develop lots. I mean, I'm at home, gotta develop. But doing it in balance, you know, we come to the Cape for a reason, and then we destroy it. This idea of keeping balance, so I think it's a great idea, we should look at it. From what I've looked at, there aren't many examples out there. I think a lot of units have not dressed, stepped up to this yet, so. This might be a challenge, and from the inertia point of view, getting tougher to come behind us, I think we should do it. Thank you for your time.
So I think the consensus is that's a priority?
Yes, definitely.
I love the idea of packaging it with stormwater, if you can.
Absolutely. And then just, just to touch on some of our long-term goals, I've referenced these before. But for the Village District, we have contracted with Barrett Planning Group. They are working on some suggested changes to our bylaws that would help us reinstate the traditional growth patterns of the village prior to zoning. As you know, in the village, we had some multifamily housing, we had some top-of-shop zoning. This all happened, well, prior to zoning, it was just the natural historic pattern of development in the area. Right now, you would not be able to do mixed-use zoning within, within a building. You would not be able to do a shop below and a top, and a residence above under, under our current zoning. So all of it is just pre-existing non-conforming uses right now. So we would like to explore, and we'll give you our findings, whether or not it would be a good idea to reinstitute something like that. There are historic structures that we need to be very sensitive to the historic fabric of the village. We need to be very sensitive to the coastal resiliency. A lot of these structures are also within a floodplain. So it's just about balancing those three things to make sure that we're not destroying the culture and the history of the area, but enhancing what currently is there. So we're investigating that right now, and we do have a consultant helping us with that. That is a long-term, long-term goal. And we can come back to the board with findings to see if we think it's appropriate, or if it should be left alone.
I think that's great.
Very good.
I think that's great.
When you say long-termly, and what, what's the timeframe?
Within the next three years.
No, no, meant for actually, these units being occupied.
Like if we were to move forward zoning and if it were to happen. Once zoning is in place, I mean, it can happen very quickly. It would just depend on how quickly we wanted to take up the endeavor and move it to town meeting. So everything requires a town meeting vote for zoning.
So this whole, has to be, the whole planning aspect, I guess, has to be coordinated with, you know, the expectation of when an area is going to become sewered.
Oh, absolutely, yes. And that would be built in.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, which, which would lead me to the, oh, well, I think Jeff might have a question on this. But this is part of phase one for sewer-ing. So what me and Steve are working on is a build-out analysis. So we need to do the tiers of total build-out within phase one of sewer, under current zoning, under relaxed zoning, how many units could you really yield? And then the third is actually implementation of what do we want to see? Because we have to control the growth prior to getting sewers. Otherwise, we're going to have our hands full with developments that may or may not fit this community, and it may or may not be something we want to see.
Jeff, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I have a question. So I was trying to follow the inner content, I'm trying to follow what you're discussing. So you hired a consultant, and did I hear you say that looking at the village?
Correct.
Okay. We previously hired a consultant, and they looked at it similar way, at what gets referred to as the Golden Triangle.
Correct.
Where we applied similarly, we were looking at this mixed-use, you know, how could we have commercial space below and housing above? And we thought the along 130 would be an excellent application of that. Something the town might we get behind. We may struggle trying to get the town behind this and the village. And I don't know the details of the sewer-ing plan. Does the, when is the Golden Triangle that sews?
That is part of phase one also. So it would run down 130, over to Katuut Road, and then up by the schools, down Quaker Meeting House. Then it goes all the way down through the village and down to Town Neck. That's part of phase one, which I can provide maps for you so you can get a better visual understanding of phase one of sewer-ing. So it encompasses both of those areas. The housing production plan references the Village District. And then the, the next long-term goal is actually based on that study and that project we initially started, Jeff, with the Cape Cod Commission.
Yeah, if I, what I was gonna ask, you've got this, I was gonna look at it, and we'll come back together. I'd ask them to bring it all together, not just focus on the village, but take like a re-roll of what we did previously for 130, where they, the Golden Triangle, and talk about where they made the best, to strike for us. Where we, you know, you get the best town buying and supportive and so forth. And I think each of these incremental differences, you do a really, really, what we need to do is bring them all together in a coalescing kind of way, so that we, we really look at it, so.
Yeah, and, and to that point, that's, that's actually the plan moving forward. So just, I'm just going to kind of put the two of them together. But back in 2019, we received a grant from the Cape Cod Commission, and we contracted with them and Union Studios. And we created a framework for that corridor that goes down to South Sandwich Village to reimagine what the Katuut Road area could look like and to look at future development, mixed-use, commercial within the South Sandwich Village, which is commonly referred to as the Golden Triangle. When we contracted with Barrett Planning Group this year, they're going to take us to a certain point. But we reapplied to get delta funds again through the Cape Cod Commission for them to continue the work they started on. So the end of the report, which I can share with you for South Sandwich Village, had recommendations as to our next steps. We completed some of them, but another portion was to actually put forward actual zoning changes and to help craft those zoning changes. So we contracted with them and asked us to help us with our sewer-ing plan. And that when Barrett Planning Group gives us their recommendations, that that then will be tied into the Cape Cod Commission's recommendations for potential zoning changes. So by the time the Commission's before the board with staff presenting to you, it'll be a holistic approach from the village down through South Sandwich. So you're going to see exactly what we would envision for that area, and to see if you support that, if you'd like changes. You know, throughout the process, it's driven by you all through staff. So obviously, you have a lot of feedback on whether or not this is a good idea or not. But the, the thing we're working on right now is our build-out analysis to see how would this look if we did nothing? And how would this look if we back zoning? And how would this look if we created that wastewater overlay so that we could plan where we wanted growth, where we wanted to preserve and conserve, and, and how those patterns would look in town?
That's excellent.
That's great.
Exciting times.
Yeah, so, and wastewater is either six or 13 years away. But we'll plan now.
I think we're gonna have land water, but we gotta get rid of it.
Yeah, probably. Okay, do you feel like we've got any promise?
Yeah, absolutely. So it won't be your next meeting that this will happen again. This takes a little bit of time to start creating and developing. Probably within July, you'll see, you'll see your first draft of zoning.
Can I ask one question on the ADUs? Has there been any permits for the new state, under the new state bylaw? And how many of them, is there any? Jen, I don't remember getting to that right.
Generally speaking, probably about five.
Oh, okay.
But I would say since February. Like, there wasn't a huge rush after annual town meeting. A lot of them were moving forward with it and had to be totally unfortunate news in February that they, they didn't meet a deadline, they would have to go under the new one. They were all able to, to work it out for the needs that, that they had. I, I do believe some are waiting to see what happens next.
So these permits were submitted prior to the change, or kind of in that interim period, not after the change? So there's been no permits after the change has been issued? People go like, nope, nope, it's not supported for building permits, yeah.
So.
Yes, go ahead.
Well, yeah. The state came down with new requirement, which then, I'm not sure what the correct word is, you know, may or, or ADU invalid.
Yeah.
And, and they came down with that in, was it February?
Yeah, so the, the inaction date was February 2nd.
That's right. So they came down in February, so the new ADUs, these five, I believe, all against state law. Because they couldn't go against ours. They had to get consistent with the state, they're not against ours.
Yes.
And what we did at the town meeting was we modified it a little bit, but mostly incorporated state law. So, so these five, my point is, I think these five are taking advantage of this new one. We shouldn't just, I'm saying they're not taking advantage, because they actually are. They came in at the time, I, I don't know one that I remember, like I said, my neighbor, he was aware the state had come down with this change, that's why he went forward. Because he and I had talked about it, he called me up, and he said, Jeff, what's going on? I was like, yeah. And he was crazy, because he was doing his second floor. And he, he needed additional, I think it was really, additional, he was able to tell me. So there are five, I think, moving forward under the new rights to have a 99 square feet and stuff. I think it's great. I know at least one, which has happened tons of this change as we go forward.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is a request for comment on number 25-08-20, Chadwell Avenue and Zero Chadwell Avenue special permit. Okay, Steve?
Sure, so.
Update us on this one?
Look a little review on this. It's Town Neck, so this is another structure, was constructed, the lot was established, and the building was constructed in 1949. It's on two 10,000-square-foot lots. It's also a garage constructed in 1969, and together, they're about 1,200 square feet. So it's proposed to demolish that residence and to build a, which is two-bedroom, and to build a three-bedroom replacement with a footprint of 2,900 square feet. They reduce some of the encroachments on the, some of the existing non-conformities, and propose a shell driveway. The coverage goes from 12% to 20% of the total. It's not in the floodplain.
Open it up to the board if any folks have comments? Only when I was thinking, I was septic, but I know the Department of Public Health will handle that. Because they were increasing this number of bedrooms, correct? Two to three, yeah. Others, any comments? Jeff?
No, I don't have any, relative to, you know, what I've heard.
All right, no comments, that's easy. All right, and the last item is the, the signature sheet. There was a typo and discovered on the original document, so we now are going to fix it. So can we just pass this around?
Yep, just pass it around. Jeff's already signed it, and then we'll ask Nicole to come in. There was a typo in your name, actually, Anne.
Really? Wow, thank goodness we're going to fix that.
There's a duplicate of three there. And as I explained before, this is, one goes to Land Court, one goes to the Registry, and we keep one for our records to verify signatures on decisions and plans.
So how long was it wrong for?
Oh, Maureen noticed it immediately, so maybe once she got back into the office and saw it.
And do we have any deliberations?
We do not.
We do not, okay. Are there any other matters that have not been reasonably anticipated by the chairperson? Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Jeff's head.
No, I have.
Yes, Jeff?
Two unanticipated, um, let me, if one was, I didn't anticipate that Anne was gonna be the chair this evening.
I didn't anticipate it either.
I, you did a great job.
Oh, that's high praise coming from you, thank you.
No, 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 really, I sat there, Jerry, as someone looked out, and you did great. And you should feel good about it. I don't need to hesitate to say it, but you did a nice job. Uh, the second unanticipated question for the annual meeting, I anticipated that the engineer would have been here tonight. You know, I did have questions for him and so forth. In the past, when engineers, in the past, if Sam didn't make it, depending upon the nature of what we were talking about, he would give a lot of town engineer would show up, or the building inspector would show up, depending again about the nature of it. Was there a reason why we didn't have somebody come in and replace and answer questions?
Yes, there was. So the reason we didn't, it was that Attorney Fitch came to our office this morning and notified us that he was requesting a continuance. So that's what I had let the Office of the Engineering Department know, was that the matter was gonna be continued. He did not mention that he was going to be asking for a vote on the demonstration plan. We thought the matter was simply gonna be continued tonight, not necessarily discussed. So that was why we didn't ask for anyone in his absence to join the meeting.
I appreciate that, I suspect that is what happened. Uh, it's unfortunate when that happens. Uh, and I get it, you know, when it feels this way, and I understand that. Uh, but, you know, I think, um, if there were gonna be discussions from an applicant, they really need to tell you so that you can have the right staff there. And that was unfortunate that we didn't have, in my opinion, the correct staff there to speak to some of the comments in the memo and could have moved forward. I'm not trying to overplay it, but I do think it's important. And I guess in the past, we've always had someone sit in to speak to the documents that we received so that, you know, we can get. And I trust, you know, the comments you and Steve made about having met with Sam and what he thought. Uh, but it's always good to hear directly and answer questions from general, so thank you.
Could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second. We have to have a roll call.
Julie, or am I supposed to speak?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes. Jeff, are you okay if we adjourn?
Yes.
Good night, thank you all.